Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Merringa.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here.
Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Ryan Wieland from Granville United Methodist Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and we're going to follow that by the political agents.
Thank you. It's good to be here. If you feel comfortable, I invite you to pray with me. Gracious and loving God, we give thanks for this evening and for this opportunity to gather here in this place. We give thanks for the freedom that we have to gather here and to have our voices heard and to join in conversation about our local community. We give thanks for this place in which we live and work, and we pray for all of its residents in this time. We pray for all those affected by extreme heat, both here locally and those throughout our nation. We pray for those who are grieving recent losses as well, and we continue to lift up the family of Jim, who lost his life in a pedestrian traffic accident recently. We pray for our community and for our first responders and our law enforcement personnel as well, who work to keep this community safe, and we pray that you would continue to guide us in our discussion tonight as we strive to become a community and to grow into that vision of a place in which all are welcomed, and we pray that you would renew us in compassion for one another as well during this time, this evening. We thank you for the gift of this day, and we pray all these things in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you for being here tonight. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, the chairman, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. You have the minutes from our last meeting, which was July 10. You've had a chance to take a look at those. It's their motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion, comments, questions, corrections, additions? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We have the bills, and as per usual this time of year, we have some in the old fiscal year and some new fiscal year. So we'll take the old fiscal year first in the amount of about $242,000. Dennis or Jane, anything you want to comment on this? Okay. Counsel, any questions about the old fiscal year bills? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the old fiscal year bills in the amount of $242,723.96?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merricka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. And then the new fiscal year, just a little bit more, about $268,000. Is there a motion to approve those bills?
So moved.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the amount of $268,725.96.
Support.
Motion, support. Great. Any question? Marcy, would you call the roll on those bills, please?
Councilmember Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Police Department, and looking forward to this.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to recognize two of the reasons why it's so nice to be a police officer in the city of Granville. Tonight, we are here to honor Mr. Christian Clark, Mr. Garth Sewers. Gentlemen, if you can come up here and join us, please. Don't worry, guys. It'll be fine. What we're here to talk about tonight was one of the incidents that you wrote about in our June monthly summary. On June 28, officers were dispatched to Pine Creek Apartments in Granville regarding the male subject, who had been evicted and had started a fire in front of the dumpster. Dispatch information included that this subject was armed with a machete. Officer Ganey, who's joining us tonight, was first to arrive on the scene. When he arrived, he saw the active fire, and the subject was in the process of throwing additional items onto the fire. Subject refused the lawful directions given to him by Officer Ganey and started to close the distance between Officer Ganey and himself. Officer Ganey observed a small club that was tucked into the subject's belt, and the subject continued to disregard the lawful orders given to him by Officer Ganey. Officer Ganey and the subject got involved in a physical confrontation, at which time Officer Ganey asked for some assistance, and these two fine individuals jumped in without hesitation to assist Officer Ganey in getting custody of this individual. And for their actions, we are honoring them both with a civilian commendation. We'd like to get a photo up. Mayor, if you could come down. Gentlemen, Jim, if you and Merrick could be in the middle, and then both you gentlemen on either side.
Christian, your turn.
Thanks very much.
Probably front, if you could, Mike. We need to move the podium up here. Put my day job here.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. That's awesome. Now it's time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight. Mitch, welcome. Well, I saw Kyla move back there a little bit, too, so I wasn't sure who was going to be here first.
Well, good evening. My name is Mitch Leachman. I live at 3963 Basswood Drive. I come tonight, I wanted to bring up an issue which, possibly, since I'm new to the city, may have been discussed or addressed in the recent past. I just again don't know about it since I only got here in December. But I would very much like, if it hasn't been addressed before, that the city consider, in whatever the process may be, of closing to vehicle traffic Indian Mountains Drive, permanently closing for vehicle traffic. So it's already a bike trail, right? It's part of Kent Trails, pedestrians, of course. I've been on it a handful of times as a pedestrian, and my comments are based on what I've seen. One is the fact that there's a lot more bikers than there are cars. So I don't really know who's using it in a vehicle. So I just don't know that there'd be much of a constituency to keep it open. Certainly seems to be a maintenance issue. It's, again, it's a two-lane wide, right? It hasn't been striped in a very long time. Just seems like it'd be a lot easier to maintain as pedestrian bike path than an entire road. The other two reasons I bring it up, and really kind of what hit me mostly as an individual, what I care about, is the fact that there are a number of places in which it is being used for dumping. That would most certainly be seriously reduced, if not eliminated, if vehicles can't drive down. And then, lastly, the fact that there are plenty of stupid people that are making their own vehicular paths off of the road into the natural area between the road and the river. I believe that's all illegal activity. I don't think there's anything about that space in which vehicles are supposed to go off-road. And of course, that leads to erosion, habitat loss, and so on. And given the river levels this past late winter-spring, I can only imagine how much silt, how much sand was drawn away, again, from the riverbanks there because of, again, that activity off the road. So, again, I don't know who makes these decisions. I don't know if it's entirely within Granville. I don't know if the County Road Commission has to be involved. But I thought, well, what better way to bring it up than to just bring it up here at council?
Great. Appreciate the comment. I don't know if we've discussed that before. I know we have.
I have. Yeah. I don't know if we have as a council. It's in the city of Granville, Wyoming, and Grand Rapids. Just to point that out, yeah.
But who has jurisdiction? The three of us have jurisdiction. I believe, and I'm talking a little bit off the top of my head, there may be a couple oil wells along there that somebody, once in a while, needs access to. But anyway, we'll do a little checking. Appreciate that. And just as kind of a reminder, down by the river is one area that Friends of Buck Creek does an annual cleanup. And we don't do it too far down on Indian Mountains, but dumping used to be an even bigger problem in that area. So, point well taken.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Last chance. Okay.
Welcome. My name's Mason Slater. I live at 262 Nelson, or Wilson, sorry, old address. I just wanted to talk about the intersection here. Obviously, we had a tragic incident a couple of weeks ago. I came a couple of years ago to talk about that after our crossing guard Geneva got hit. My kids cross there all the time to get to Central. And I just feel like we need a better setup than what we have. And I think that if this doesn't kind of show that, I'm not really sure what would. I don't know what exactly that looks like. I'm not, you know, I'm traffic control. But the way that we have it set up is a high pedestrian area and a high-traffic area, and it always feels risky getting across there. I mean, not so much tonight because it's, you know, quiet and there's big gaps. But, you know, if I go walk the kids to school, or when the gentleman a couple of weeks ago was hit, we were on our way back from the farmer's market. We have to cross there. We came around the corner to saw everything. And I just, I think we're going to keep running into issues. There's innumerable traffic accidents, as I'm sure we have record of. But the pedestrian thing in particular, the system is not good, and it just kind of keeps happening. So you guys may have very well talked about plans going forward for that after what happened, but I just wanted to raise that so it's on the record.
Appreciate the comment. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. Next item is a rezoning request for 2814 Franklin Avenue. There's a memo in our packet from Matt from April 28, and also a copy of the May minutes, the minutes from that meeting from the Planning Commission. So I believe that tonight, we're just looking at 2814 Franklin, and the request is to be rezoned back to I-2 Industrial. Currently, it's zoned NW North Wilson, which is a mixed-use form-based code. And the request is to have it rezoned back to I-2 Industrial. JR, anything that you want to add? Or I know Chair of the Planning Commission, Carolyn, anything, either of you?
I can defer to Carolyn. She's here.
Well, obviously, we, in the original redoing of the zoning ordinance, we put it to Form 8. But Mr. Deppi came in and explained why he wanted it, what his rationale was. And frankly, we revisited that particular parcel and realized that because of the vacated Franklin, the vacant, it's right across from the DPW, it really did fit more into the industrial versus the form-based.
Mr. Deppi, anything you'd like to add? Welcome.
Thank you. No, I think you've explained it well. It was I-2 for the 24 and 1/2 years that I was there, and it was changed. I was surprised I didn't get a letter that it changed, but I was told that because so many properties were changed, it was just published in the newspaper, which very few people get nowadays. So I was surprised when I went to address the property. I'm thinking of purchasing that my zone. The website and the reality were two different things. And so I started this process of at least hanging on to the I-2 designation for my property because that's the permits and all the things you guys have been really good to me about, helped me build that business up as an industrial to an I-shop. I just thought it was kind of strange to switch it after you gave me these permits to keep moving in that direction the last 26 years. So, that's what I had to say.
Thanks.
Yep.
Dennis, anything you want to add?
No, I think Matt's memo is very well-written and done to outline the supporting information for why this change back to I-2 is there. Mr. Deppi has asked for zoning reconsideration on two properties, but as you stated, we're only dealing with the 2814 property that was originally I-2. Staff supports the Planning Commission's approval of that request.
Okay. So our normal procedure on a rezoning is to introduce a table and then take it up at the next meeting. Do I understand that you would like?
Can I address you?
Yeah, please.
I would like to have it voted on tonight. I think it's pretty clear that it's been I-2 for so many years, and because of the rationale that the previous committee voted on to approve that, that all the information's there, and there's not much, no surprises. I'm not doing anything new to my property that would cause more fall. It's just maintaining what it's been for so many years.
Okay. And Rand, I'm sorry, JR?
No, I just wanted to add, too, that, you know, Mr. Deppi's request to move back to I-2, if it would have stayed in the form-based code, it wouldn't have not allowed him to continue as a local business owner here. But there may have been some challenges down the road for succession planning, or, you know, if he were to sell, or whatever it is, or future expansion. So we recognize that and wanted to make sure that we honored the downtown, or, you know, Granville business owner and stuck with that, too. I know that's all in the notes here, but I think it was the right move to go back to that.
Any thoughts about acting on it tonight? And my understanding is we would consider that an emergency ordinance, and it would have to be passed by five of the seven of us? Any thoughts on that?
That's correct, Mayor. The Charter normally requires introduction and then a meeting where you take action. But it does also provide that if you declare something to be an emergency ordinance, you can introduce it and adopt it at the same meeting, but with a supermajority vote only.
Okay. Gentlemen, thoughts about that? Josh?
Well, I'm supportive of the rezoning. I'm not sure I necessarily would say it's an emergency, given that, you know, we've been kind of operating this way for a while. But I had questions about, and I could go either way. I have questions about the 2815 Wilson property, which I understand there's private transaction discussions going on or whatever. Are we only considering the 2814 property tonight?
Tonight, yes.
Because the request included both, so that one would have to be dealt with later then if there was a transaction or change in ownership?
Right now, that one is still in front of the Planning Commission for a possible reconsideration and some other activity. So tonight, you're only voting on the I-2 portion, which is the 2814.
Mr. Deppi's property?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm excited about there being something on that corner. It's been empty for, what, 20 years? Just about, probably. So I would be curious to see what plans you might have down the road with that. But supportive of the rezoning request for Mr. Deppi's current property.
Other thoughts, comments? Paul?
Yeah, I have, no objection to this. I'm sure nobody else on council does either. I'm not trying to speak for anybody on council. As far as, you know, bucking procedure and doing it under an emergency status goes, I don't really have a problem with that either, even though it's not an emergency. I realize that. But it's really just a formality in this case, in my opinion. It's kind of rectifying something that, you know, maybe should or shouldn't have been done, or maybe should have been communication better, anyway, sort of way of saying.
In an emergency, whatever you declare it to be.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's subjective. If for planning purposes or whatever, it would be helpful to Mr. Deppi, then you can decide that it's enough of an emergency to go forward under that provision.
Yeah. Well, then I'm comfortable with that.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. And that's a motion to adopt it tonight, or?
To adopt it tonight under an emergency status per the Charter.
And I support it.
Lots of comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I think that Josh brought up a good point. The, while we're only talking with 2814 this evening, it does, it is affected by the future of the other parcel. And so we are currently working with Mr. Deppi about a conditional zoning agreement. He has requested that we enter into negotiations about that, which would keep it at, it would move it to an I-2, but with the conditions of an NW, so that when the property is sold, or if it's changed, a change in use occurs, then we can revert back to the NW zoning and fulfill what the original rezoning was meant to do. So this does, they both play on each other. I'm not sure Mr. Deppi's going to be moving forward with his agreement on the conditional zoning if he doesn't get this reverted back to I-2. So that's kind of the justification for an emergency ordinance this evening.
That's helpful to know that. Thank you. Do we have motion, support, any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
No.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. It's quite long, and adoption would be in the best interest of the city because there are quite a few purchase items in there. We have the Clean Water June report, as well as the investment report from June, the Environmental Sustainability Committee, a couple meetings, May and June, the DDA meeting from July 13, delegates to the MERS Annual Meeting, which, Marcy, it's?
Jane and Mike.
Jane and you. And then authorization for expansion of the cell phone services at the Police Department. There's a memo on there. Also, the miscellaneous purchase orders and requests, the blanket purchase order for the administration, Clean Water Plant, DDA, Department of Public Works, Fire, and Police. I think that's something we do every year. Also, electric work, DPW garage floor, HVAC and boilers for the cemetery, the City Hall, DPW, court, police, senior neighbors, demolition of the chapel in the cemetery as well, which is probably well due. It's been a long time since that's been used for anything other than storage. Also, a line striper for the motor pool and as well as a utility tractor. Any items on there anybody would like to discuss before we take a look at a motion support? Yeah.
Yeah. For the DPW garage floor, I noticed in how concrete that was not bid out for competitive quotes, and I just wondered why that was.
They do all of our concrete work for us, the sidewalks, and everything else, and we're just kind of working relationship, and we're able to get in.
Any other comments or questions about any of the items under the consent agenda? Like I said, lots of purchase orders in there, but it looks like the HVAC systems ought to be good for everywhere for a long time now. Well, beyond me, so.
Yeah, well, beyond me, too.
Yeah. All right. Well, good. So is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only item is a temporary liquor license request for 301228 Street. That's for the MetroCruise, and this location will be a pit stop for the MetroCruise. The date of the event is August 26.
I just got a question for anybody on the council or the audience. How far down does the, I've never been to the event. I know it's like on 28th Street, but how far down is this? Is this like the western end of what they do? Do you know? Just kind of curious. Carolyn, it looks like you know. I mean, you've been around here as well.
Normally, it has ended at Byron Center Avenue.
Okay.
It's been strictly Wyoming and Kempwood, but I know there's been a push to expand it, and I think from some of the businesses along, you know, the automotive-type businesses. But it's normally south of Byron Center.
I'm glad to hear that. So I haven't really been too out of the loop if it's not been in Granville before, so, okay. And Chief Anglin, do, or Deputy Chief, do you have any concerns about it?
No, we've already talked to the applicants and also to the MetroCruise. Orban Ford has loved their Mustangs, have been a property many times in the past. This is the first official pit stop that's been in our city in quite a while, and it runs all the way from 20th and 9th all the way up to Cascade. But there are a lot of open areas in between. So it should be a good event. It starts on Friday night and goes through Saturday. However, the temporary liquor is only being requested for Saturday.
Chief, or Dennis, is this something that the chief signs or the council approves? Or Marcy, maybe you know the answer to that as well?
Chief Anglin.
Chief, okay. So it'd be authorizing, chief to sign. Is there a motion, or any questions for the chief or Dennis? Is there a motion to authorize Chief Anglin to sign the temporary authorization for Adesanya for that date in August?
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Anything else? Nothing more, thank you. Start with the councilmember comments. Randy?
Nothing tonight.
Josh?
Yeah, just again, excited about the park improvements that are going on. I know they moved over to Wedgewood now, and I haven't been over there this week, but last I looked, the playground was down, and there was work going on over by the horseshoe pits for the pickleball. So nice to see those improvements again. The basketball court surfaces look really good. Those were completed at Calvin Crest and at Heritage now, so look really good. Just excited to see that continuing, so. And then also appreciate the comment today from Mr. Slater as well. I guess look forward to any recommendations that the Police Department might have as far as any traffic control changes at that intersection. But thank you for making those comments.
Thank you. I think, are you the one who puts the stuff on the city's website about the parks and so on?
I've been doing some of that.
Good, thank you. But lots of good updates. I really appreciate that. We all appreciate that.
Lots of good feedback, too.
Yeah. Thank you. Justin?
All right. I just want to once again commend Christian and Garth for their actions, and that was really awesome to read and then to see that presentation tonight. So very thankful for what they did. I want to also lend my support to at least part of what Mr. Leachman referenced. Indian Mountains Drive, the dumping is really bad. Just the street markings, many times that I've been riding my bike, people come the wrong direction in their car down that road all the time. And so I think there needs to be greater signage and maybe some sort of barrier system so that cars cannot do that. So I agree with a lot of what he was saying. To Mr. Deppi's point about not receiving communication and the newspaper publication... To Mr. Deppi's point about not receiving communication and the newspaper publications, I just want to say that I've been saying for quite a long time that the state legislature needs to do something about this archaic system where updates are put into newspapers because short of my grandma, I don't know anyone who is still, which it's great that she does, but most people are not. And so I urge all people to contact their state representative and really pressure them to make that change because there was something in the bills tonight, I think, paying for those publications and I just, I think we could use taxpayer funds better and it could be communicated better. And then finally, once again, Mason, coming here to speak on that, I agree with what Josh said and what Mason said, we need to address this. Now, this is the second time you've brought this to the city's attention and with this most recent tragedy, definitely something needs to occur. So thank you for coming to speak on it. Thank you.
Wow. I think the last two council members covered pretty much everything. I concur with them, but I'll say thanks to Pastor Whelan. I think tonight marked you as the most heard from invocation preacher in Granville ever. So congratulations.
You know what? That's funny you mention that because before the meeting tonight, I said, you know, I just appreciate how faithful you are and actually coming when you're supposed to.
He's always here. Thank you.
I think you passed Bud Pratt tonight.
Yeah.
I should have passed him.
Oh. Another contender for that, probably.
And Bud's a year or two older than you, something.
That's it? Yeah, a lot has been said and probably everything that I wanted to say has been said, too. I'll just add that I'm sorry we lost our two heroes in attendance here tonight, so I can't tell them to their face, you know, how much I appreciate what they did. And of course, I'm talking about Christian Clark and Garth Sewers, who we honored here tonight. We put that picture on our Facebook page presumably and can we get that out, though, to like to MLive, too, or somehow? I mean, back in the day, there would be an advance reporter here. That's the kind of thing that they would publish.
That's a good point.
It's such a good story.
A couple of years ago, somebody did put it on MLive, a story, there was a couple who saw somebody who fell off their bike and they did CPR and it's called like One Good Thing or?
Okay.
It's, MLive does good stories, so.
Lot more news worthy than a lot of other stuff I see, in my opinion, anyway. Anyway, just my two cents. Thanks.
JR?
Nothing additional to add? Everybody covered it? Thank you.
Thanks for being here, everybody. I just have one comment and that's this afternoon, I had an invitation to go through the former Granvila building and also the Corner Records shop. That's next door. And turns out the new owner, yeah, we have a connection, so we chatted about that for a bit as well. So it's kind of interesting to see what he's doing there. It looks very different. It's one big space in both places, so he's, I told him about Teresa and I think they've already been in touch with her and as well as Heather at the Chamber, so I think they're going to be a good addition to Granville, especially in that area. It's actually a pretty big piece of property. There are a lot of parking, a lot of building. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes? In the opposition, please say no. Great, thanks. Thanks, everybody, for being here.